I want to welcome all of you here to our meeting tonight. I'm having a good time. Coming and Summer is checked in from Zoom, so we see Summer there. We do want to welcome our upcoming new board members that will start next night. Rebecca Walton Barker and Eric Stewart. And we have a couple of information sheets from other candidates who were here to sometime soon to fill Tim's place since this is Tim's last meeting as well. So, thank you all for being here. Want to appreciate Susan and Tim, all three. So, we'll talk a little bit more about that in a little while. Right now, we had some corrections to the minutes that I need to go over. Need Liz to share any of those with you? Do you want to talk about those? There was just a few things that need to be corrected in Liz's report before we vote on the minutes.
You go ahead.
Okay. All right, I will try to go through. It's in the section under the Report of a Coe River Regional Library. In the one, two, three, four, four black bullets and it's the white bullet under the fourth black bullet. ORRL has also posted a regional in-service where archivists come and discuss collections, care and preservation for library staff in the past. So, that was one correction. Under the tech grant section, one, two, the third white bullet. Title VI Training for Staff has been required the past several years and is a requirement this year. If the county provides Title VI training, then Blunt staff may use that as their Title VI training. And then the next to the last dark bullet down there, she encourages trustees to complete a trustee certification program. So, I think that's all the corrections in that section. So, do I have a motion that our minutes be approved? With the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any other corrections in the minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, at this time, we will talk about the trustee office or nominations. Tim, can I turn that over to you?
Sure. So, as far as the Leadership Committee, we, that went last month. We went together and then we discussed and put board nominations for Lauren to be the next chairperson for the board and for Stephanie to be the vice chair. And then, I think Secretary. Yeah, still Summer, so that's not really, I don't know if that's even a nomination.
It's an appointment.
Yeah. But yeah, and that was the, that was the result of that meeting.
Okay.
So.
Do we have any nominations from the floor for either of those positions? Anybody want to volunteer for either of those positions? Okay, can we vote on these as, as just a slate? All of them at one time?
Oh, oh, we gotta, we have a volunteer.
Oh. I'll be back. Signing it.
You better not raise your hand. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Very good. All right. Welcome to our guests again. Thank you for being here. Nikki is here in place of Liz, so we'll get to her report in just a minute. The, you, we didn't do the copy of the regional. Sorry to bring the duty. I'll send it out.
Okay.
Okay. Tomorrow, under my reports, the Laptation Pod Grand Reveal will be at nine o'clock in the morning. We're excited about that. I would like to commend the staff and friends on the MiniCon. I don't know if any of you got a chance to come by Thursday, Friday, or Saturday during that weekend, but it was crazy, wasn't it?
It was actually, so it was super busy?
It was busy.
But we finally got the formula right on staffing it.
Yeah.
So, that was great. And I have temporary Harper tattoos for everyone. There is a protective covering on the front and a little moisture is needed for the back.
It was very, it was very successful. I know the friends will do the report, they'll do the report on their sales and all that, but it was, it was very busy and, and all hands were on, on there. Sure. So, thank you all. Also, we'd like to congratulate Melinda Rust on her recognition for 40 years of service to the library. That was something that Blunt County Government recognized her. And also Kathleen Christie on her upcoming retirement. We hate to see you go, but really impressed to read all the stuff that you talked about and everything that's been happening.
Lots of fun and it was many years.
Right. Any, any other reports from any board members or anything? All right, Manny, I'll turn it over to you.
First, I do want to thank Logan, Susan and Tim for their dedication, serving on the board. I know some board meetings were pretty breezy and easy and then some were not so breezy and easy. But thank you for your dedication and, and participating in this board. I want to thank you, Stephanie, for the past year. You've been an absolute rock star in this as the chair. Because again, some, sometimes some meetings, it was very easy. And then there were some that weren't so easy. They were challenging, but you, you were terrific and phenomenal at what you did. And I really appreciate that. I mean, you really, you were the chair. It's like you were the chair of this board. So, I want to thank you. Again, when there were some rough times, you, you took care of it. So, I, I really appreciate that. So, thank you for that. So, MiniCon was fantastic. It was busy, but it was not, the staff weren't running around. It was in chaos with a chaotic look. So, we had enough staff on board. Everyone had a good time. Staff was walking around, looking at the vendors, participating as a judge for the costume contest and going downstairs to the friends, checking out the book sale as well. So, today, we just did a debriefing or I like to call it Monday morning quarterback of what worked, what we, what we can do next year to improve it. But we're all hands down very happy how it went this year. We're gonna, that formula that Andre mentioned, we're gonna use that next year and add a few new cool things as well. So, one thing I do want to point out, what Children's is doing during our summer reading program, they are taking the library out into the county, which is fantastic. They are doing storytimes at the John Sevier Pool. They already had one at the Lewisville Town Ball. They have several more coming up. And then the Smoky Mountain Outdoor Center, which I believe is in Townsend.
That's right.
In Townsend, okay. So, they've been doing that. And actually, this week, they're doing Pickleball right down the street here in Alcoa. So, that should be a lot of fun. Bob Reference, it's, it's all about Kathleen for her 19-plus years here at the library. She's done a terrific job and sad to see her go, but I know she's not going to be far. She'll be still coming in. And for the new board, new board members that are coming in, Kathleen will be the, your tour guide for the facility. So, even though she's retiring, she will still be around, which is good. It's all a good thing. One thing I wanted to point out, I always get a kick out of the questions that Reference gets asked. And you do get some really amazing, the day of MiniCon, there was an interesting question. And the one that I kind of looked at, but you get it. Number for the Lions Club to donate their eyes. So, I thought that was interesting. And then about a local restaurant, someone swindled money. But that, that's what the Reference desk does is they get questions and boy, we got an interesting question this past Friday, which we will not put in here, but.
We'll put that one in next month.
Oh, goodness.
That's for the book.
Yeah. Yeah, we joke that there's going to be a book with all the interesting things that happen. Reference question will be a whole chapter. I don't know.
So, what is a semi-otisen?
Oh, French, I know what's. Let me write it down.
It's something.
Give me a minute.
Okay, the Reference.
Is that a, the new way of saying 40? Semi-otisen?
Andre, I knew it when I looked, when I wrote that down.
We'll come back to that. So, Kathy has something really neat in the collection portion. It's just how the weeding process goes. And she does such a terrific job to make. And you see, this is what it looks like versus this, where it's not cluttered and everything's just all on top of one another, that you're able to weed the collection, which weeding is a word of just to remove books. And we do that because of aid or there's a damage to it or the circulation isn't there. So, then you make it more inviting. Patron, over at Patron Services, I want to say, yeah. 500, and that's not mispronounced, 559 new cards in the month of May, which is wow. My goodness. We hosted a staff development day over at the Partnership late May. We had Wendy Wad and Sarah Jurnisky from United Way. They were fantastic. They gave a great presentation on services that the United Way provides. And Reference really took a liking to that because they do get a lot of questions when it comes to say soup kitchen or something. So, they have this wonderful spreadsheet that lists everything on there. So, that was great. We also had Ryan Daniels, the CEO of the Partnership. He gave a great presentation on what the Partnership does and some of the new fundings that are coming in the future. And had a lot of questions from, from the staff about that. So, that, that was good. And then Mary Beth Lima, who was one of my classmates for Leadership Blunt. She's at the UT Extension and she gave a presentation as well. So, it was great. It was neat to have it offsite. And there were many staff that had never been there, which was great. So, they got to see it for the first time down, down in the basement. Did, did you find out?
It is the study of signs and the communication and the meaning behind signs. It doesn't sound real thrilling, but that's what it is.
Yeah. One last thing, and this happened today. We had our pre, excuse me, our pre-bid meeting of the Book Return Project. We had three general contractors come out. Eric, who is the architect for the project, he ran it. Greg was there representing the board. They had questions. We showed the exterior, then we went in, showed the interior. And the unsealing of the bids will be July the 11th at 1:30. It will be done on Zoom. So, once I get the link, if you're interested, you will see Mallory from the purchasing office. She will just be at her desk opening the bids. So, we can get the show on the road with that. That's great.
So, we don't have to go to the office?
We don't have to crowd into, if you want to, yeah, yeah.
She'll be there with you.
Yes, yeah, with her letter opener. I will pass along the. Oh, sorry.
When you, when you retire your books, we're gonna go.
So, some of them, Kathy can answer this question.
In good shape, they're going down to the friends. Some of them, we have people that can come in, repair them and we'll put them back out. And some of them are just nasty and they get recycled. They're either retired, replaced or.
Sold.
Yeah. Retired, replaced or repaired.
So, I hope everyone, if you go over to page 10 on the PR update, you'll see a QR code. I hope all of you went and clicked on that link or took a photo of the QR code. That is a community member, a local business owner from Lewisville Mercantile, who did a TikTok, sorry, Instagram little video about how excited she was. She checked a book out. She gave a short little book review. And then she was like, and what I love is I can return it here at the Lewisville locker. So, I just wanted to let you know that the locker is very much appreciated and supported by that community. And we got a little, we got a great little, you know, what do they call that? Organic social media blog. So, that was great. Again, so MiniCon, PR-wise, was very exciting for us. We got to launch Harper just between us. What is it? We had someone also do Harper's birth chart. So, if you're interested, that's right, watching behind our little Scott, our little girl, then, then let me know. But she was very well received and people are excited about her. They definitely liked the little tattoos. And the, the program was, yeah, was a success. It really was. It was nice because it was staffed the way that it was. You could see staff from every department having the ability to get out and interact a little bit with the programming and it was lovely. There was a whole, it was a happy staff. It was good to see. Moving on to the finances, we are tracking very well. Nothing too exciting. We are under the projections except for when we come to our revenue and we're doing very well with our revenue. That's it. Our, our fiscal year ends June 28th. As of June 14th, we weren't, we're not allowed to raise any more purchase orders until the next fiscal year, but we've got everything taken care of and we're, we're strong and steady coming into the final stretch. Any questions?
Okay, you're in line. I've reported the foundation board.
So, when I did the presentation here in April, I did another one, a follow-up presentation for training with the foundation members. And we're going to continue with some training, some fundraising training with them. And we didn't meet in May, but we are looking forward to the book drop, the progress on that and see how that progresses. The foundation paid for the steps along the way and so looking forward to that. The, the, the training that we're going to do with the board members will probably begin, be next month, but probably the following months with the board members. And what I'll take them through is a series of how-tos to try to alleviate some anxiety that a lot of people have with fundraising. We've asked them to begin to identify some folks that might have an interest in getting to know the library better. Kind of where we need to start to bring people into the library and beginning to give them sort of the close-up view through, I mean, in sort of the back room. So, that's.
Thank you, Bill. For the board of friends of the library, Miss De.
Well, we have had an amazing month. We had our sale and made $15,500. And the Friday night of the sale, we launched Vietnam Voices 4, the fourth and final in the series of books that we published. And we had Out on the Lawn, so we sold another $815 worth of books that evening. I think the people were really excited because all of the authors and editors were there and allowed them to each, you know, get book signing done at the same time. So, that was another successful. We had almost 50 people out there. We had on Saturday, our celebration on the lawn, the second of our anniversary specials. And we had the face painter out there who did a great job with the kids and a couple of adults, including myself. I had a little 50 painted on my face there for our 50th anniversary. And it was well received. We sold T-shirts for the Golden Anniversary. They're almost all gone. So, we have, we just in general had fun. I know there was a lot of people came out, took advantage of the food trucks and sat in the, under the tent there and had their lunch. So, it was good. This month, we also got a $3,089 donation from the Dollywood Foundation. And what happens is if you sign up for the Imagination Library License Plate, that money Dolly gets and she funnels it out to the people who sign up. And so, we got our percentage of the money.
How much was it?
$3,089. I thought the check was a mistake. I called them up and said, did you mean the sum is to us? I, I had never seen that, but apparently we're going to get that. So, I'm inclined to now go get an Imagination Library License Plate. We had our annual meeting last week and our election of officers. So, this is my last meeting. Danny Kemp will be taking over and I think Marie Smalley was here last, last month. And Marie will be the vice president. I'll still be on the board as the past president, but, and I'll still be volunteering downstairs. And I also agreed to keep the last two anniversary events. So, the next one is August 3rd, our Teachers Thank You Event. And that's really shaping up with Newell donating teacher, or supplies for teachers. We have Kroger getting into it and giving us apples for the teachers. And we think we have a florist who will remain nameless until they commit for some roses for our teachers as well. So, we actually have that, letting go of free books, free children's books, free adult books, private sale, all of that will happen on August 3rd. And then our big event, October 25th, we say save the date. We have five of our 23 tables reserved and it's a table for eight. Tickets are going to be $50 and the table will be $3.50. And that is moving along. We contracted with Clickbid this week for the auction site and we'll be putting up auction items. As a matter of fact, we have a flyer. I was just gonna send a few around. We're going to be passing them out to businesses to look for donation items, but it applies to individuals also if you're interested. We actually have one of our folks who's interested in donating a gold coin collection for our 50th. So, we're pretty excited. And all of the funds will go to the library. During the annual meeting, we also celebrated a projection for the end of the year, but our projections for the year. And our book sales went up from 71,000 to 75,000 for this year. eBay went from 126,000 to 138,000. Donations was up well over 10,000 and membership was up a few thousand dollars as well. So, all of those buckets are really great. We did get the $20,000 full amount for the top grant so we can continue the technology classes that we've done this year. So, all of those pieces are pounding together for another great year of things. And. And the library, yes, but we'll talk about that a little bit later, won't we, Manny?
Yes.
Where, it has been my pleasure to sit here and look at this side of the operation. So, thank you for bringing us to here.
We have, thank you, Dave. You both say hello.
All right. Let's see, we do not have Liz here today, but we do have Nikki Branham Snyder to report from our Coe River Regional Library. Thank you, Nikki.
Thanks so much. There's not a lot happening with the region as Manny and Andre are aware, though there are quite a few deadlines coming up at the end of the fiscal year. And we have the report that Summer included in your packet. Andre did get the tech grant and he was like, one of my first ones to submit it. So, the deadline for that was yesterday. You guys are always so wonderful. The tech grant has been turned in. I know you'll finish your continuing education requirements for your staff. I know Liz has sent the library service agreement to you as well, so you have that. Title VI Training is required for all library staff because you are subprincipients of federal funds through our office and you all always do that as well. And the standard survey, I think Liz had that on here to mention specifically against July 15th. And the standards are a benchmarking tool, not a report card. Everyone always gets a little apprehensive. So, think of it as an advocacy tool and Manny will complete that. That's really good for the region. You all are wonderful to do your trustee certification, to meet all of the deadlines. Pretty easy board, pretty easy library. In terms of that, that, the only training that we have coming up is the 24th of June will be at the Tennessee State Library and Archives. And that is the Archives and Preservation Training that Liz mentioned last time. That's it for the region unless you all have questions.
Do you know when the upcoming trustee training is?
The next trustee workshop is going to be September 25th, tentatively at Arc Circle, but it's not finalized yet. We are still waiting for final review of all of our training calendar for the next fiscal year. So.
Thought it was interesting in the brochure about the, what do you call it? The storybook trail. I don't know if you all read that or not, the storybook trail that they installed in the city of Dayton. And it, the way I read this, it looks like they put three books on each.
That is a whole title of one book. Bear the Mouse and.
Really?
Yes. And so, they.
I'm all mouth.
Yeah.
The four books on one. Why would that would be?
Sorry. Stories are a big deal in Dayton. And so, they chose a strawberry themed book. And they did a really wonderful job of laying it out and having like some math and some activities, all different kinds of prompts of count the seeds and how many strawberries and take big bear steps. It was very cute and really well done and they partnered with their Parks Department for that.
That's, you know, we're talking about the storybook trail, so.
The Governor's Early Literacy Foundation does provide a grant for that and will open again in the fall. So, yeah, I'm looking.
Thank you. Yeah. Are there any committee updates? We've already talked about the bid for the book return. Any, any other updates from any committee members? We will try, I think, I'll talk to Lauren. Now, next month, I don't think is a good time for us to do any workshop on our, our future plans. But I know Manny has been talking to staff and has some feedback from them that we'd like to share with you all. So, maybe in August, if we can look at that next date in August, maybe coming in an hour early, 4:30 or so. And just kind of getting it up to Manny on where we are and where we need to go in the next few months in the, in the future for our long-range plan. So, you all look at that and think about that. We'll, we'll communicate a little bit closer to that time. Okay, under old business, confidentiality of library records. We talked about that last month. Do I have a motion to approve the confidentiality of library records? Do I have a second? Second discussion? Any, any feedback? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, our internet safety policy. We're not voting on this. So was there any feedback on the internet safety policy? Corrections or suggestions? Okay, there's not any. We'll move on. Manny, you want to talk about the next feature?
Well, this goes hand in hand with, with, with the friends. And I know in a few moments, we're gonna talk about the annual friends funding request. But I, I also wanna, this is like a night of thank yous and. We need to thank he as well for being, serving as president for several years on the board. And really taking the friends from one level to another level and opening up new ideas and thoughts. To help the library. And I know it's not easy because how many volunteers do you have downstairs?
Hundred and forty.
So that's a lot of personalities and you have managed that very, very well. And we'll still have our Thursday morning chats. With you and Mandy and Gigi Dix there as well. So we'll continue to do that. But I would just want to thank you for just some of the ideas like we're going to talk about in a few moments of having a disco at the library. And you not batting an eye like, yeah, let's do it. So not all friends presidents are like that. And that's good that you have an open mind for that. So thank you so much for, for doing that. That being said. We are looking at doing a silent disco here at the library on September the twenty-eighth. It's a Saturday. There's no football game that night. So that's good. This is something, and apparently another library in the region has done, correct?
They did a Taylor Swift album launch party. So they. They're not silent for certain.
I, I have heard from speaking to the, the companies out of Knoxville, they do a lot of Taylor Swift silent discos. And Amanda Small, who is with Beerware Blunt, she took her daughter to one. And there are. Little girls to adult males that are screaming at the top of their, or singing, but it sounds like screaming. Taylor Swift songs. So if you've ever been to one, or you could just look on YouTube, it's just people dancing. It's quiet, but you hear people shouting and singing and, and there'll be three channels. So there'll be a dedicated Taylor Swift channel. And we have one of our staff members who is a big Taylor Swift fan. She will be the DJ for that channel. And then Summer and Rebecca will be the DJs for the disco dance. Eighties dance, whatever, dance music channel. So you'll probably hear maybe the electric slide, well, probably not the electric slide. We'll be able to crush it into one another during the evening. But you might, you'll hear some disco, ABBA, Bee Gees. Who knows, maybe the Charleston will be in there. I don't know. But they're the DJs for that.
The last time we went there and so many.
All the hustle or something. Yeah. So we're looking at, the library will be closed, but we're looking to have this disco from six to eight. Again, staff members will be the DJs. There'll be staff members there kind of. Kind of being the bouncers or whatever, just kind of walking around, watching two hundred people screaming and singing somewhat. The, the cafe will be open. Yeah, Chelsea will have the cafe open. So we have the space for it. We're going to clear out that whole main gallery area. And just have a dance party. So I'm requesting to the board if we, we can do this.
I miss motion if we allow Manny to do the foxtrot.
No breakdancing, we know.
Any discussion or questions or anything? We have a first and a second.
I think the only question that kind of pops up in my mind is because that's, that's a bunch of people. Do we have, should we adequate staffing, security, anything like that?
We will. Yeah, we definitely will. We're going to clear out the whole area. So we're, we're moving where the new books are as well. And we'll have staffing there to kind of, we're going to need people to hand out the headphones. Yeah.
So Manny, what went through how this will work? You got three DJs.
Yes.
You got a big room.
Yep.
Each one has.
And they have a different color right there, right?
Yeah, there's three channels that every headset has. And so red channel might be Taylor Swift, blue might be the foxtrot and swing channel. And then whatever the other channel is. He'll be waltzing, waltzing.
So we are doing it this Saturday at Hops in the, or Friday night at Hops in the Hills. We did it last year on Summer on Broadway in Hops in the Hills. And a lot of younger folks really like it a lot and it is hilarious a lot. I mean, people.
I did it last year and the best part is just to take the headphones off and watch everybody in the room, fly in the room, you're going crazy.
I will share it. So if you want to check it out, you can see what it's about this Friday night if you want to see.
Where are they doing?
They, somewhere on Broadway where they closed down Broadway and it's in the parking lot next to Blue Tech. The biggest thing that we had trouble with just sharing with you guys is making sure folks didn't walk away with the headset. And so there is some kind of special protocols they follow. Just pay attention to that. Great.
We'll have that one entrance. We'll have someone there to.
I think one entrance is smart.
It'll be easier here than that.
Yeah, that's part of that parking lot. Yeah.
So is two hundred enough is my only question?
Well, you know what? If we need more, then next year we'll go for two fifty or. But this is just a trial run. I mean, I'm, I think we'll get two hundred participants. So something different.
Does the partnership have headphones also?
No, we utilize the same company. We're probably a, probably a different company. Someone in Knoxville.
Are you going to be the DJ yet?
No, we, they are the DJs.
I think you should let Manny do it.
Any other questions? Hey, we have a first and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And the friends request?
Yes. Did we, did we vote on the, did we vote on the silent discos?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Voted on the approval to take the headband here. And now we need to vote on friends request for the, the silent disco funding, I'm thinking.
Yeah. And then following that, we'll, under the friends funding request, we'll go over the annual. Yeah. So this, it's a thousand dollars for the disco. Again, this has got, that's the cost for the headphones. The tablets, they supply tablets and they'll have the playlist on there already. And we're going to be the DJs. It would have been additional cost to hire DJs, but. You know, the, the, he, the gentleman, his name is Joseph, he, that, you know, the staff can be the DJs. And I know Savannah is going to be our Taylor Swift DJ and she was so excited about it. So that, that was easy getting Summer and Rebecca to be part of it.
I would make a recommendation upon the board.
The new board members. I would like to see one hundred percent board participation with dancing.
I will be in the actual other direction.
That would be our lead. We can line dance. So do I have a motion that we request the funding from friends? So moved. Second. Also, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have this.
Yes.
You have a paper on your, at your area there for the funding for the friends for next year.
And this amount, this request is lower than last year. A few of the things I'd like to point out. If you look at AS two zero four, Annabelle Smith Literary Festival, that is the new name of our fall. Local Authors Festival. We really wanted to kind of go back to the history of the library. And Annabelle Smith was the first librarian. Kathleen actually has some artwork from Annabelle Smith. And we did find a picture of her as well. So we kind of want to go back to the origins of, of, of the library. If you want to look at, it's, it's under, it's under the PS Cafe, MGE, Admin and PR request total. Under ADM two five one, library spaces evaluation. So. Is it the spring?
Yes.
Back in the spring and Steffi and I watched Be a Zoo. But Angenee and I think Summer. Rebecca and, no, Zoe, Beth, Summer and Angenee went to Art Circle. And attended a full day workshop from a gentleman by the name of David V. And he does library space evaluation for libraries, a library, yeah. We're in the process of beginning a long range plan. And maybe possibly a new layout of the, of the library. So this worked hand in hand. He was outstanding. So that lie on it would be for. David to fly from Long Island here to Blount County and he would spend two days here. So he would do a full evaluation of the building, including the basement. Also included in that, he would hold a community forum. So the one evening he's here, he would host that for the community to find what they would like to see. In our library, if there's new services that they would like to see, if there's something. We have a lactation bar, that could have been an example, or study, private study rooms, that could be something. So that's part of that as well. Angenee, I don't know if you want to, because you spoke with David on the phone.
So it's a, it's a very thorough process. He will be talking to stakeholders. He'll be talking to frontline staff. He will be observed, his first hours, he comes in and. He doesn't really talk to anybody. He wants to watch people. He wants to see where they gravitate to. He wants to see how they move through the building. And then after that, he will, after he has had those assessments, talks to the people, done the community forum. He's going to go away and he's going to write, it's usually between a sixty to a hundred page report coming back. Talking about his findings, what he observed, where he thinks we can create. So. What in this program, which thank you Nikki, because it was the regional library who put it together and it was phenomenal. He introduced to, to us or the people who attended that, that under principles of merchandising. That you can make this space so much more engaging by the layout of it. By how you let the people flow and move within it. And so that's what we're inviting him to come. We're asking him to come here so he can help us create little quote unquote neighborhoods. That encourage people to explore and use our space to optimum levels. And I have to admit, the example he shared with one library during that training was. A library director had a hard time getting her staff on boards. So what she did is she picked a remote display. And she applied his philosophy using dictionaries and thesauri. And they saw that display circulate in, like circulation increased by forty percent. They were, it was just flying off the shelf. And he introduced a very important concept. About how every customer service interaction was trust building or trust where, you know, weathering. And that was very impactful for me. And he said. The reason merchandising works so well in a library is because your patrons and your community. Start to trust what you are putting out on that shelf for them and they want to explore it. And if it's thesauri and dictionary, they're going to check it out. And that just blew my mind, blew my mind. And that. Stuffing an area with everything actually detracts from what you've got. So. Well thought out displays are much more effective and really get your collection explored. So, sorry, I'm really excited.
This is just if we're looking long range plan, we're talking, and that includes circulation because that's just fiscal. This is an excellent ingredient to add to that. So that, that's part of the request. Yes, it does. Yeah. Yeah, he's going to be doing the basement as well.
What about our outside space?
He, I think, like just the perimeter he was mentioning.
He didn't, I mean, he's going to be talking about the, as he approached the building, but not the parking lots, not the, you know.
What about our garden areas or two, the large outdoor area outside of.
So I think because like, so you're talking about this like, for lack of a better word, pavilion concrete area over there. I think that will be part of it because it is part, but I thought you were talking about like the lawn space and the, like he'll probably care, cover the learning lab. You know, so, but it's, it's.
It's neat. I mean, I think it's.
Do you integrate? If we decide, if we would decide to go with this particular program, do you integrate that into the long term program that we have now? That we're trying to get off the ground and.
Absolutely. This will be very helpful in deciding, you know, the types of furniture, the types of display. How we want to, it, it could go so far as how we find our, how we use our signage, what type of signage we use. How we use our digital signage, like because all of this creates an atmosphere.
So, so he's done this before. So have we maybe reached out to that? Want to show those other particular libraries and find out the effect that they.
So in the, in the training, he actually had several examples. And one of them was a library out in Seattle, Washington. And. A very small library, maybe sixteen thousand square feet, had glass on one side and was just jam packed with everything. And he got them to reduce their collection by thirty percent and their circulation increased by thirty percent. He created spaces and little nooks and crannies for people to visit and explore. He took collections and highlighted them in different ways and.
Almost like staging a hall.
Exactly, exactly. Like so for instance, this particular library kind of sat on. You wouldn't know it because they had bookshelves lining it, but he took the shelves away and there's this amazing view of the ocean. And by opening that up. And by opening that up, he, people started to gravitate there and spend time there, which means they were using the collection and the space more, so.
It sounds like this is the kind of data that we should be preparing to feed into a digital artist for a foundation request or, or.
It's bingo, yes.
Yeah.
Well, do you guys have this, the same conversation about Friends one? Me too, because this is part of the.
We, we have.
Yes, we have, yeah.
We have, yeah, the conversation.
Yeah.
And so one.
We encouraged them to put it on the list.
Okay, cool.
One of the.
Make, make, make sure that, you know, the balance of power is working, you know.
So when I meant stakeholders, there's gonna be, um, the founda, a member of the foundation's gonna be present, a member of the Friends is gonna be present, a board member. Is gonna be present, so that he gets a feel of what everyone is, you know, can bring to the table.
Community forum is gonna be such an important case, I think that's great.
It is, it is, yeah.
That means that you need really have some type of ad- advertising priority.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe two or three months of that.
Exactly.
You know, the, um, the output of that form, is that something that, uh, could be published publicly, uh, or some sort of summary or any sort of. So, as sort of a feedback mechanism for, where here, is this what the community's saying, or is that stay internal to the library?
So not knowing what it is.
Right.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, some community forums are recorded and are on YouTube, so I have seen that. And one of the library he did was the Waymouth, the Tufts Library in Waymouth, Mass. They just built a thirty-three million dollar brand-new library, they brought him in, and if you look at, I've shown you pictures. He's really big onto mobile shelving, that's all it is, everywhere, and they're all, the highest shelf is four feet. So there's no six-footers or, or higher on there.
Lot of flexibility in the shelving and the displays and all of that.
Yeah.
And he is currently working with another Jonesboro, uh.
Agreed.
Washington County Library, who has, um, had a tough. Tough situation handed to them, and he is turning that lemon to lemonade.
They got moved, uh, their building sold, their municipality sold their building, and they got moved into a former grocery store with not very much warning, so. And after he left our training, at, at Art Circle, he went directly to them, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Angenee, staff excited about potential of, like, having flexible spaces and stuff, I don't, like, some people are creatures of habit. We don't, we would have to educate, like, people who've come, who've come here for years, and then, oh, your section may have changed.
So what is it? When, when we came back from the training, we were very excited, and we shared it with Manny, and we shared our thoughts there, and then at some staff meetings. It was mentioned that we attended the training, and staff were encouraged that if they ever got the opportunity to see him, that it would be helpful, because it would change. It would change the way they view signage, the way you stack a shelf, the way you put up.
We.
We, yeah, you know, the way you organize and.
Yeah.
Um, and we kind of left it at that, because we didn't know what was gonna happen with this, so now that. Depending on what happens with this, the next phase is to, you know, share with the staff what.
Nikki, did they record that session?
It's not recorded at all.
But he does have some recorded trainings, like, you can find him on YouTube, um, he's spoken frequently at the Association for Rural and Small Libraries. He may even have something on Web Junction. So check Web Junction, because I'm thinking he has a session on Web Junction that he could see.
We have a copy of this book.
Yeah, um, he's, he's the library space planning guy, um. So he transitioned from marketing and corporations and, like, consumer habits there to working with libraries, so, yeah.
And he still teaches that at the.
And why?
In my.
Yeah.
I have a question about the overall request, you mentioned that it went down.
Yeah.
But then we also added this ten thousand dollar addition, so. What, what's the difference, that was a, that was an add-on, right?
That was an add-on.
But what's the difference between requests from last year or what?
Well, the reason why it's lower, we wanna wait until, uh, David does his. Uh, assessment.
Okay.
Because, and we've spoken with Dee already, uh, if there's. And you'll notice it's nothing when it comes to furniture or shelving, that's what we're waiting for David, then there would be a, a wish list.
An additional request.
Yeah.
I threatened great bodily harm.
Yes.
To, to Manny, and she sent in a thing, request that was higher than last year's.
Okay, I was hoping that was the reason.
Yeah.
And then.
We'll put an asterisk next to it when we talk to the board.
Um, I know Chelsea and I are on the committee for the, um, cafe, like, I think, I, my hope is that he's interested in looking at that space too, because. I mean, there's so much when it comes to functionality and displaying of cafe items that, like, certainly on the committee, I have no clue, but I know that. It will require some additional requests, and so I didn't fit in here, so, okay, I'm happy with all of that.
I go the same thought, I think that Shakespeare Garden, if he looks at that.
Yeah.
Some creative, creative spaces, just ideas there, probably be, we're probably gonna hit budget too, right?
Yeah.
Can we? It's gonna give us a lot to plan for, as I look at Bill.
Yeah.
You need to make sure that it looks at the Shakespeare Garden, and I was on the Greenway the other day, and I was looking at that space, I thought, I had, like, man, programming out there. It's, there's just so much opportunity, so I would just ask, like, if, definitely, those places are included. No programming in August and May, I know outside, maybe trying to, but.
So we need to ask for approval of this, do I have a motion that we approve the Friends funding request for next year?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Um, under important dates, uh, we do have a change for the foundations, next meeting will be July nineteenth, except for up the office or other things. Uh, they met a week early this, this month, so, um. That June twenty first meeting will not, has already happened last week, so July nineteen. Uh, and our next meeting. Is July, I can't see, July sixteen at five thirty, um. So is there any other announcements or any comments that any of you would like to make? Say goodbye to two, three board members that are leaving and going on to the Green Pasture. Well, I like.
We appreciate your, we appreciate every thanks.
Comment.
Comment.
So I just like to, uh, really thank the board, um, for what we all have done in the past few years. Especially since we've had some really challenging, uh, times, and. I'm really, really proud how the board has stayed together fatigue and fought through some of the challenges that we've, we've had, so. Appreciate that, I appreciate you Manny, in terms of coming on board, and the selection committee. We had three, four candidates, and I thought we were leaning towards new people, and we decided on Manny, and I think it was the best choice that we made. Appreciate what you've done. But until July one, you're still with me, so. So I'm really, I'm really proud of what we've done, and I'm proud of the, uh, staff and their commitment to Manny, and. And the, all the work that you guys have done to really make our jobs easy, because, again. We still, uh, still should remember that. The library really is the gem of Blount County, and people who haven't, uh, really gotten that, uh, that information, really don't know where they're. Must be under the rocks or whatever, but, uh, we continue to do great things in, in the library, I'm proud of what you guys have done, and I'm really proud of being a member. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan. Any else have any?
I think, I think I'll follow up, just ditto, um, but, uh, you know, uh, just wanted to thank everybody for. Listening to my crazy questions and ideas over the years, and, uh, just seeing everybody's passion for the library, and getting a chance to be part of that for even just a small amount of time, has been. Really a wonderful experience, and I'm, I'm really saddened that we'll have to continue on for a little longer, but, uh. That is what it is, uh, but I'd say I just encourage staff and board members and Manny, like, everyone, uh, take pride in this building, take pride in this organization, and. Never, never stop asking, like, how can we, how can we serve the county better, how can we serve the people better? And, uh, keep following that, and, uh. So, uh, but yeah, and just, I also wanted to express thankfulness and thank, uh, Dexter, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Becca Wolf.
Becca, thank you very much for being willing to serve and stepping up to the board, um. And, uh, um, it's, it's not always the easiest of commitments, um, sometimes it's, sometimes it feels light, other times it feels heavy, at least that was my experience. Uh, but I really appreciate you willing to serve the library and the county and the people.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you all, appreciate the audience.